Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 15th, 2014 to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan, Holst, Johnson?
Here.
Madsen?
Here.
McCusker?
Yeah.
Shobloom?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Moves us on to item five on the agenda this evening, Public Input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Mike McIntyre, 303-4071 First Avenue Way, Cannon Falls. Just for a little background, a year ago, we reached an agreement with the city when they dug in on the east side, when they had the east side project up there to be dug in for sewer and water, which we were with the agreement. After we were dug in, we had one year to hook up. So we were dug in last fall. We also reached an agreement that we would be assessed in 2014, but there was no date on that assessment, and most of us up in that neighborhood took it for, it was probably after our year to hook up was up. So we went on and we never heard anything. And then I got my tax statement last month, and I had $750 interest. We agreed for $15,000 for 15 years that if you wanted to put it on your property tax at 5% was the agreement with the city. So then we never heard anything until, like I said, like my tax statement came, and I had a $750 interest charge on there for the assessment, for the $15,000. So I have three questions for you. Number one, I want to know why we weren't sent any notice or bill or anything giving us the option to pay that assessment off at a certain date before we were charged interest. Number two, there was other east side residents that had stuff done up there, and they were sent the bill given a certain date where they could pay without being charged interest. And I talked to one of the members of the council here, and he says ours was a special assessment and theirs was just an assessment. So I guess I want to know what the difference between a special assessment is and an assessment. And number three, if we come down to pay off our assessment, our city assessment tomorrow or the next day, do we get our interest back? Thank you.
Ron, do you have anything on that?
We did receive a letter from one of the residents in the affected area, and Lanell and I discussed it. She discussed it with the city attorney, Roger Knudsen. And the letters, see, those were, I can't address the special assessment versus assessment. The difference between the two projects was, the one was in agreement, the project area that you were in was in agreement with the city. The other one was a special assessment project. They were both special assessment projects, but how the matter was handled as far as the other project was a normal special assessment project, where this was an agreement because there were some unique situations with that project. The city attorney recommended, you know, we discussed, you know, what should we do or is there anything that we should be doing, can we do, and he recommended that it just be left as it is. So I don't know what, it's been certified to the county. They do have the ability to pay, you know, after the first year, they do have the ability to pay up until November 1st, so there's no further interest on the, they can pay the assess, full assessment up.
Do you have a copy of the letter that was sent to them?
I have a copy of the May 8th letter. And as far as the folks, Lanell, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as the folks with the agreements, that had the agreements, that actually signed the agreement, I don't know that there was a letter, there was a cover letter to that agreement, as I recall.
The May 8th letter that he's referring to is the letter that was sent to the property owners on the major portion of the east side project, and then the other area has assessment agreements. We do have a copy of that, but he is correct that there was no additional letters after that agreement was signed, but that unfortunately is standard practice.
And in that, in that letter, did it state that they have the opportunity to come in and pay that before it got put on their taxes, or was that not clear, or?
If I remember correctly, I think it says that they have the option to pay it in accordance with the law.
And nobody, nobody from that group called the city and said, hey, what does this mean? When can I pay? How do I pay? Nobody, nobody did anything after that letter.
I personally did not receive any phone calls such as that. I don't know if Aaron did or not. If he did, he didn't relate that to me.
So the assessment agreements for the, and the agreements we're talking about, so everybody knows, is the, I believe it's 10 homes there by the cemetery, signed separate assessment agreements. The other people on the east side project was part of the, I believe it's a 429 project, so that was a little bit different. It's my understanding, the assessments agreements that the 10 homeowners assigned wasn't definitely clear on dates as to when they have to, when they, when they had to pay or buy if they wanted to avoid interest charges, and thus they didn't know until they got their tax statements. And that's something I know that in the future, we're definitely going to change.
Mike, do you have a copy of it?
Yes, I have. Who am I going to give it to?
Why don't you give it to Ron?
Ron.
Right here, this bottom line here.
Did you read that, Ron?
It just says 214. There's no date in that.
Yeah, this is, this is page one of the agreement, and in the section two, entitled "Special Assessment," it states that "The city will specially assess $15,000 against the subject property for the public improvement. The assessment shall be spread over 15 years, together with 5% interest per year on the unpaid balance. Prepayments shall be accepted as provided by law. The first installment shall be payable in 2014." And then it goes on, the next sentence goes on to the next page.
So the installment is probably referring to your tax statement, I would assume?
You know, it-
But it's real ambiguous there.
Yeah.
And I would say you're correct, and cities use, it's common practice for us to use payable 14 with 2013 taxes, but 90% or more of your residents wouldn't, wouldn't catch that. I mean, that, that wouldn't be common to them.
Okay, so what's our legal, what's our legal standing here? What did Roger?
He just, Roger said that, excuse me, Roger Knudsen is the city attorney, said it would not be prudent to waive the interest. We need to treat people equitably and not just reward those who have misunderstandings. Well, it's already been certified to the county. It'd be difficult to change anything at this point. So, you know, there's, there's some, there's some, I'll call it gymnastics for lack of a better term that could be used. I mean, the, the interest has been certified, but ultimately, the interest is being paid back to us as a city. Now, in structuring the financing, and I don't, you know, I don't know exactly how that was set up, but obviously, you use special assessments as a funding source, not only the assessments, but the interest. So, you know, there might've been, there might've been some minimal interest that perhaps should've applied if you would even consider basically rebating that amount of interest, whether it be the full amount or less than the full amount, or whatever the decision might be.
So, I mean-
The two projects were different as far as-
Is there, I mean, is there any recourse at all that we can, I mean, take to, I mean, because if we didn't tell them that when they would pay and that they would have to pay the interest by a certain date, you know, there's nothing in there that says it, there's nothing in there like in the other letters that everybody else got said, you have to pay by November the 1st or December the 31st. I mean, there's nothing there. I mean-
But wouldn't that mean that the homeowner should've picked up the phone and called City Hall and said, when should I pay this?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
Not necessarily.
I don't think so either.
I know neither.
Yeah.
2014.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't, I mean, it didn't say you have to make a payment by this to prevent it from being on the 2014 taxes. There was nothing in there that said that. It just said sometime in 2014, you're going to get billed, it'd be payable sometime in 2014. Basically what, that's basically what the letter says.
Well, it says by that law, too. It doesn't really say a date in there.
Right.
The other thing, I'm curious, Ron, is are, are the other projects, do they get the same interest and assessment on them, or was that just unique to this project, these 10 or 11 houses? So if you got the other project we did up there, did they all get the same thing, the interest charge?
It would be a different amount because they're paying less.
Right.
You know, they're all paying like in that $5,000, $6,000 area.
Right.
But they did get letters stating if you paid by a certain date, you could avoid.
I mean, you're talking here, 10 or 11 houses, and I'm with Bill. I, I want to have a meeting about this, and I want things done next, different next time, and I really do feel that there should've been a final statement, I think, to say that's how we did it in the past. Well, I don't, I think we can always improve or do things better, and we should do that. If you took and can't do anything, I don't see a reason we can't have a meeting and at least try to do a 50% compensation. And you're talking $3,500 or something is not going to break our city, but at least it puts a gesture out there that maybe some mistakes were made, and maybe we could do things better next time. So whether that's workable, I don't know, but if we had a meeting about it, maybe that could be discussed. Thank you.
Is that something we could put on our, our next council meeting to discuss those possibilities? I mean, and it would only have to be for those who wish to pay off in full, you know, not, not for the ones that are going to pay it over a 15-year period. I don't know if that's possible.
I would say we could do that. The one thing to keep in mind is that they should probably pay the, I mean, they should probably pay the taxes before the May 15th date, because that's been certified, it's in the county system. I would think for simplicity, for the county's sake.
Oh, there's no doubt that they have to pay the county on the 15th. That's, that's not, 15th and October.
So then if you-
Because it's divided, I'm sure.
Yeah, if council wants to work in agreement with the folks, whatever it may be, after the fact, but I think it should be clear that, that they should be paying it and then-
Well, we'd have to make sure that it's only for that affected area, which is the 10, I think it's 10 homes in that area.
Right.
And then only for those who plan on paying it off in full if we make that decision to reimburse some or all of that, of that amount. Or we may not, or we may say, no, we can't do that.
That would be something we'd have to look at, because then you'd be looking at charging some interest and some not, perhaps.
Right. That's why I'm suggesting for, because we don't meet again now for three weeks, I believe, so that would give staff time to check into whether we can or can't, or whatever.
It's unique.
Yes, it is unique.
Yes, I think we should, we should look at putting that on the next agenda.
Sure.
Thanks, Mike. Is he still back there?
No, he's still-
Yeah, he's there.
Anyone else wishing to address the council under public input this evening? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending April the 11th, 2014. Item B is the meeting minutes for the April 1st, 2014 city council meeting. Item C is second reading and adoption of ordinance 336 and summary of publication amending Chapter 152 of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning certain property from an R3 medium-density residential district to a L1 limited industrial district. Item D is Resolution 2068, accepting a monetary grant from the Southeast Minnesota EMS program for the purchase of ambulance equipment. Item E is the purchase of an ambulance in 2015. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down? Seeing as there aren't, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I will second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. Any further discussion? Carrie's.
Did we vote?
No.
Hold up the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Out of myself.
Move on out of here, Rob.
All right. That moves us on to council business. Okay, item A on the council business this evening is the redevelopment moratorium of understanding. Mr. Maroney.
Thank you. Before I start, I just want to introduce Glenn Christian. I'm sure you all know Glenn from Mayo. He's here tonight with regards to this particular item, as is Roxanne Flotin from the EDA, and Bob Banks from the EDA and the Cannon Falls Housing Initiative, and our two EDA members on the, on the city council. I've been asked to present kind of the point we're at at this point through the Economic Development Authority, working cooperatively with Mayo and with the Cannon Falls Housing Initiative to work towards a plan to redevelop the existing hospital site following the hospital's relocation to the new building. I've been on a committee working with Mayo on this for probably close to two years or so now, and through that process, that ultimately came over to the Economic Development Authority, and we were asked to assist Mayo with talking about alternatives for redevelopment of their site, redevelopment in the neighborhood, how to do it, how to assist them, how to hold their hand through the process that we'd have to follow in order to accomplish the redevelopment of that site. We've developed a plan that I'll present in a moment. We've discussed that plan on a couple of occasions with the Public Works Commission for their input, and tonight, we're here to just advise the city council of where the memorandum of understanding has led us in terms of a redevelopment plan. If you've got questions, comments, suggestions, we certainly welcome those. With your support and encouragement to proceed from this point forward, we will then go back as an Economic Development Authority, Cannon Falls Housing Initiative, with Mayo to then really start the next effort, which is the implementation of the plan itself. So I'll go over kind of just the essence of the plan. If there's any questions for Glenn, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them, or any of the members of the EDA. I'll refer to the, to the graphic that was included in the, in your packet. It's a little bit tough to read, at least from, from the public, public view, but I'll use the graphic as kind of just a means to kind of explain the overall components of the plan itself, and there's many of them, so I'll go, go through them as quickly as I can. You all know that the hospital owns a building, the hospital. The hospital also owns three residences in close proximity to the hospital, one here, one here, and one here. And they own the parking lot on the south side of the access to the clinic hospital. So those are the properties that they own. We started with that. We evolved through a consideration of just a bunch of alternatives for use of the, potential reuse of the hospital building, potential elimination of some part of the hospital, elimination of the entire hospital, looking at different possibilities for the use of the bear land that they have, the existing three homes that they have, and arrived at a point that the Economic Development Authority is recommending, the Cannon Falls Housing Initiative Board is recommending, and Mayo is recommending that we proceed with in terms of the plan itself to be implemented. And that plan would, would be described generally as follows. The three homes that Mayo owns, Mayo will offer those for sale to the public. Anyone who is interested in purchasing those homes would be welcome to purchase the homes from Mayo. The Economic Development Authority is not involved with that, so the public could buy a home from Mayo. Mayo then would retain the proceeds from that sale and use the proceeds of those sale to help implement the redevelopment plan. So the three homes are staying with Mayo. There's no change with that. They'll market them, they'll sell them as they wish, and then they will dedicate those sale proceeds into the redevelopment plan that I'll describe as I continue. The big cost to Mayo for this project obviously is to eliminate the building. That's the big cost here. And that would be financed under this plan in part by the sale of the three homes that I just mentioned, and once the hospital has been removed, we will create five or six buildable lots in that neighborhood that will also then be made available for sale. I mentioned the Cannon Falls Housing Initiative. Our board has an agreement with Mayo that you saw in the memorandum that allows the initiatives to purchase one lot each year for three years, once these lots become available for the home building program at the school. We're very excited, that speaking as a board member, because Mayo's been very interested in working with us. They've offered us terms that, that are really workable for us. We're not required to purchase those lots until the school year that we need them, and we've got those terms worked out with Mayo as an economic initiatives, and we're, we're very happy with that. We're pleased that Mayo is willing to cooperate with us. So we'll have the ability to buy three of those lots under the agreement. The other three lots can be sold to the public. Again, the proceeds of those lot sales, at least five of six of them, the proceeds from five or six of those lot sales will again go back to Mayo to assist with reimbursing them and financing the cost of preparing this site for redevelopment. One lot in particular, I want to draw attention to the city council to, because this is one area that we would ask in the future that you'd be involved with. We've talked about the potential vacation of Floyd Street in this area for a couple of reasons. One is that would recreate another lot. Two is, we don't feel as a group that that particular segment of street necessarily needs to be retained, and if it's not retained, it doesn't need to be improved with infrastructure, which again, the city is predominantly financing when we get back to West Side 2. If we vacate that, create that lot, and we vacate the property up here, what, what the plan includes then is the reconstruction or new construction of a usable alley there that would provide service to the property owner to the, to the east, it would provide service to the property that the hospital now owns to the west, and it would retain the access to the existing homes in this location. So we do need to replace that alley, and that would be part of this plan. But again, we would create one additional buildable lot. When I said that Mayo would take the proceeds from five of six, that sixth lot in the agreement, to the extent that it is ever sold and built as a residential unit, the proceeds from that sale would be shared equally between Mayo and, and the Economic Development Authority. So that's how that's been resolved, at least at this point. The existing parking lot south of the access to the clinic would be dedicated by Mayo, not solely for buildable lots, but would be dedicated to the city of Cannon Falls as a neighborhood park. So that's what would happen with, with the existing parking lot. So overall, as we've gone through this plan, we feel that certainly Mayo's been very accommodating to work with us on this process. We've gone through a series of alternatives with them. We've worked out a financial plan which really relies as much on Mayo's investment as anything else, but their investment will be recouped with the sale of these properties to the extent that they can be. We don't know if they will or they won't, but that's the agreement that we've reached, and we feel comfortable in the finance plan. We also like the fact, obviously, for housing initiatives, that they've got the ability to purchase three lots. It's always been a challenge for us. Each and every school year, we're kind of scrambling for lots. This would really fill our inventory for three years, which we're very happy about, so that's good. To be able to create a neighborhood park in that area, it's something that those ideas were brought to us from, from the outside in, and we've looked at it, we've, we discussed with Public Works Commission, and Mayo's been willing to come to agreement to donate that property to the city if this plan is ultimately implemented. The final thing that I'll say, and then turn it over to Glenn if he's got any additional comments or questions, or any members of the public or council, but as I said earlier, we know in 2015, the infrastructure, West Side 2's scheduled to be completed. We have factored that in in terms of the schedule. We've also factored that in in terms of a cost. And when I say we factored in it as a cost, we know as economic initiatives, as a buyer of lot, that we're going to be responsible for the payment of some of those assessments. So we factored that into the agreement. Mayo anticipates that with the West Side 2 Improvement Project, that they won't be assessed as a hospital, because the hospital will be gone, but that the city council will work cooperatively with them to come up with a fair and equitable assessment against a residential lot, just as we have in other neighborhoods. And so we've worked that through, at least with, with Mayo and the Economic Development Authority and housing initiatives. So there's going to, if we move forward, there's going to be a lot of individual steps that are going to have to be followed in order to implement a plan of this, of this type, but suffice it to say that, that Mayo has been very cooperative with us and are very interested in seeing us move this plan forward so that they know when they do relocate to the new hospital, that there's a plan that the community supports and a, and a vision for the future of that redevelopment neighborhood that they're comfortable with, both financially and as members of this community. And I think this plan, at least at this point, represents that vision. So with that, I'll stop at this point and maybe just ask Glenn if there's anything else he would like to say, since he's been very much involved with this as well.
Hey, Dave, I got a quick question before that. What, on the backside there, you notice there's four homes, and on this side, if you vacate that street, you're going to have six. So what's the width of them lots?
If, good question. If, if we go six lots, there's 63 feet each if we do them equally. If we go five lots, obviously, they'll be larger, and that's still kind of a variable right now that, that we're, we're still kind of considering. But if we went equal lots for six, they'd be about 63 feet a piece. Standard lots are 60 by 142 in Old Town. Yep.
Well, yeah, I mean, for a while, here in Cannon, one of its 75-foot lots. So we've kind of gone the other way the last few years, but roughly, do you know what it would come out to be if you made five lots there instead of six, or?
We're 75.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members and city staff members, I just want to say thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak to you about this particular proposal this, this evening. Again, my name is Glenn Christian. I'm an operations administrator for the Mayo Clinic Health System in Cannon Falls, and I do live in Cannon Falls itself. I do want to thank Dave Maroney. He's spent a lot of time working with us on this proposal. I do want to thank also to the members of the Economic Development Committee, as well as the members from the Cannon Falls Housing Initiative for the work that they've done on this particular project as well. We just really do appreciate the support that we've received from everyone. We want to be good neighbors to the persons within this neighborhood. Certainly, this is a residential neighborhood. It currently is zoned business residential, but we do feel that the best use for this particular property is to convert it back to residential. As Dave had, has mentioned, we've been at this for a period of time. We've had several questions in regards to what are we going to do with the existing building, and we have come to the conclusion that the best course of action at this particular time is to take down the building, so that is our plan. With this plan, we do plan on moving to the new facility, as you know, and we're quite excited to move to the new facility. Our plans are, at this particular time, to begin to move into the new facility on August 4th, and so that will start the process of vacating the building. We will move the clinic first, and then we will move the rest of the medical center to follow, but we plan to have that completed in early August, so that would be the move. But we do feel very much responsible for this building, and we, we want to do something that's appropriate for the community for it. So we, we do feel that we've come up with a good plan for this, so we want to, want to be able to move forward. to follow, but we plan to have that completed in early August, so that would be the move. But we do feel very much responsible for this building, and we want to do something that's appropriate for the community for it. So we do feel that we've come up with a good plan for this, so we want to be able to move forward. The plan itself, though, we will not be able to do anything with taking down the building until 2015. And so that is our plan, to do something within 2015. So we would be working on that and working with persons for disposal of the building itself, and we realize that's our responsibility to take care of the building itself. Dave mentioned the sale of the homes. We do plan on selling those homes, and so we will work to sell those. And so as soon as we move out of those buildings, or those homes, we plan on putting those up for sale. So that may proceed, taking down the building itself, but we do plan on selling those. So again, I want to say thank you to the group that's worked so hard with us. I want to thank you for considering this proposal, but we do think it's a good plan, and we hope that you will endorse it for us.
Glenn, I really appreciate you coming in tonight. Mayo's been a good neighbor, you know, since they've been in Cannon Falls, and I think it's a good thing to move it back to residential. I mean, there's really no fit for anything else in that area, and I really, you know, it's, with the new hospital going in, it's going to be a good place to put more homes in Cannon Falls. And so, anybody else got anything?
The only thing I would say, Dave, is I would like to see this be a family area. I would like the bigger lots. But I'm open either way. The Floyd Street thing, I'm really throwing that around, trying to figure that one out. I could see the assets of the privacy, if you just have an alley back through there. I could see that being an asset, but I don't know how the neighbors feel up there as far as Floyd Street being close down. So I guess that would be the only two questions I would have in the thing. But sixty-foot, or seventy, another fifteen-foot on a lot is move up more room to add another garage stall on someday, to get a driveway down past the house and get to the back or something. Sixty-foot lots, you're pretty much limited to the lot lines and the house, and that's it. So that's just my thought on the thing.
Those are good questions. We've had those same conversations at Housing Initiative, because if we're going to go ahead and purchase three lots, not only do we want to fit within the neighborhood with the new homes, but with the sixty-three-foot lot, and with having the alley, that's nice, because we would have access from the alley in terms of garages, but it's probably going to be a different type of home than what the kids have built in the past. So I think we're going to continue to take a closer look at that as we move forward with initiatives and try to figure out, at least for those three lots, is there a housing plan that we can fit on there and fulfill the goals of the Housing Initiative? In terms of the vacating of the street, we know we've got to have a public hearing on that. We have that conversation at this point with the other neighbors. But before we went to a public hearing, one of the things that we would do, working through the EDA, is communicate with the neighbors who would be affected by that and make sure that we understand kind of what their feelings are too before we go ahead. We haven't done that yet. It's still just a plan, but like I say, I think there's some things here that as we get into the implementation end, we may find that we make some adjustments here or there. We may go back just to the original block and not, if we don't have a vacated street, we would lose one lot, just go back to the standard lots that we've got and go from there. So we still have some flexibility, but we wanted to kind of give you the overall vision of at least the direction we're taking, and it's going to be a lot of stuff that we have to follow to get this put together.
The four lots on the backside, are they sixties or seventy-fives or?
I think they vary. I think there's been some splits back there.
Okay, thank you.
What else?
I would just say, being on both the EDA and Public Works, Dave and Mayo have put in a lot of work on this, and both of our committees recommend moving forward with this memorandum of understanding, and it's a good plan.
We need a recommendation or approval for a vote on that to move forward on this one?
I think at this point, just some direction to keep after is good enough. We just wanted to at least let the council members know that this is kind of where we're at at this point, and if we're generally comfortable moving forward, we will.
And then formally sign.
Right, formally sign. And that'll be an EDA signature with Mayo, not the city council, so.
Okay. I mean, I think everybody's in agreeance that we recommend that you move forward with the memorandum and keep everything moving forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your good work. Thank you.
Okay, that moves us on to item 7B, Resolution 2069, adopting the public improvement and special assessment agreements for the 318th Street project. Mr. Maroney.
Yeah, this is good.
I just lost everything.
Yeah, I did too.
So did I.
So did I.
Technical difficulties?
Yeah, we just lost all our agendas.
I got mine. It's the rest of this crew, I'm telling you.
Maybe if Mike's in the back room, he could give us a hand.
Morales, you fix it for him, Mayo.
I can get your paper cupped over here.
That'll work.
Your mine opened back up.
I got mine up, yeah.
Yours come back?
Yeah, mine was up.
I never left. Well, mine did come back, Mayo.
Okay, they're back. Okay, we're good now.
Could you go?
Yep.
Thank you. Glenn will remain here again, since he's also involved with this particular agenda item representing Mayo Hospital. We've been working at the request of Mayo, looking to us to, as a city, to make improvements on 318th Street to provide better access to the new hospital. We've been working, again, over the last several months with them, looking at various alternatives for improvements to 318th Street, various cost considerations to improve that street. Do we have curb and gutter, storm sewer water, sewer, et cetera, or what do we do to address the issue of making that a better, safer, more comfortable route to and from the hospital? And what we evolved to, working again with the Public Works Commission, is a project which would include the construction of a twenty-six-foot wide Batumina Street on 318th Street, from 65th Avenue East over to the New County 24 Boulevard. And with that cost estimate provided by Greg Anderson of $210,000, we began conversations with the various property owners who would be benefited or impacted by this improvement. And if you look at the graphic, it really turns out to be essentially four parties, really. One is Countryside Implants, Steve Bauer on both sides, north and south of 318. One is Randy Retzickel on the south side of 318. One is obviously the new Mayo Hospital on the south side of 318. And then on the north side of 318 is located in Cannon Falls Township, not in the city, so we become, as a city, a potential participant in this project. So with kind of the lay of the land being what it was, and a $210,000 cost, working with Public Works Commission, we began conversations with the three private property owners to see what kind of interest there would be in having the improvement done, how much willingness there might be to pay for the improvement. And ultimately, going through that process, we discovered that there was interest, there was willingness, but there was still at least a financial gap. A financial gap being the portion of the property that's outside of the city that's going to be benefited by this improvement. So we ended up negotiating over the course of a couple of months, assessment agreements, which you received in the council packet, assessment agreement signed by Mayo. Mayo has stepped forward and agreed to finance up to eighty percent of the cost of this project. The balance of the project costs, if it's a $210,000 project of $42,000, it's proposed to be split between Randy Retzickel, Countryside Implants, and the city of Cannon Falls for the portion of the property that's outside of the city. So we've worked through those negotiations with the property owners. The property owners have signed assessment agreements. We've taken it back to the Public Works Commission. They've recommending that we move forward on this. But really, at this point, the main question for the council is whether or not you're willing to accept an estimated $18,000 of cost sharing, primarily to pay for the portion of the street that's outside of the city that isn't being paid for by the three private property owners. So we will have some costs associated, you know, with this project if we go ahead. So that's, I think, the essence of the proposed project, and if the council chooses to go ahead with this and accept the assessment agreements, we would proceed then with a similar agreement by the council to authorize the city engineer to prepare plans and specs. We would move forward with the development of this project, engineering, the bidding, the construction, with the anticipated completion date and time to serve the needs of the new hospital when it opens. Not much time. So any questions of the council members at this point?
And then our part of that, the $18,000 will come out of the general fund, or where would that come from?
We could do it out of the general fund, we could do it out of other funds, but yes, we would finance that as a cash contribution.
Which as far as, excuse me, as far as the city street projects, this is not very much for the city, and it does, it will benefit a lot of residents as they go up to the new clinic and hospital.
Anybody contacted Cannon Falls Township to split some of that with the city?
I could do that. I could do that. It's going to, the other part of this process that we considered was, the original cost estimate to put in curb and gutter, a normal width city street, sewer water extended out to County Boulevard twenty-eight, or County Boulevard twenty-four was about $800,000. And that was kind of dead on arrival, so to speak. We weren't able to negotiate assessment agreements for that cost. So we brought it back after more thought and decided that, you know, at this point, with uncertainty about what kind of development's going to be north of 318, or even east and north of here along the New County 24 Boulevard, we kind of rethought that and decided that, I hate to use the word interim improvement, but we thought that we've got to have some hard surface on there. This road is going to be used, the dust needs to be controlled, and so we kind of reprogrammed and came to the $210,000 more basic street improvement. But to your question, Jay, the thought is that in the future, depending on the growth of the city east, none of these property owners here, right now, are requesting annexation. No one east of them has been requesting annexation. In the future, I would expect that we would all guess that there could be annexation requests, and at some point in the future, there may be a need to extend, you know, utility water, full curb and gutter, storm drainage, et cetera, to that area. At that point, clearly, there'd be the opportunity to assess fair share to the property owners that would come into the city from Cannon Falls Township. But until that happens, we can ask for participation, which I'm happy to do, and if they're willing to participate, great. If they're not, they won't, but we can certainly ask the question. But I think in the future, what we looked at is this road is going to certainly serve the near-term needs for transportation, but in the future, we fully expect that there's going to be, you know, growth issues that we're going to have to deal with to the east of this improvement.
Is the Mayo Clinic, do they own right up to the land by Retzickel's there, all the way to this road, or is there another owner in there?
Here's Randy Retzickel's building here. Mayo owns all the way over, and this isn't exactly the New County 24 Boulevard, but they own all the way here and then south, a little bit off of the paper. So they own all the frontage, yeah.
Yeah, you got the twenty-six-foot deck on there. We are going with a trail up on the new road up there, a bike or a walking trail.
Goodview County is, yes.
Is there any way that we could mark off three feet of this twenty-six feet and keep it as a walking edge on the side of the road that would tie these trails all back together? And Mayo, possibility would have a chance someday to go right up through the woods there to the hospital with another trail and make a big loop there?
I'm not responding for Greg Anderson as the engineer, but with the twenty-six-foot surface, I think if we tried to designate three feet off of the twenty-six, that that would be problematic. We are going to, yeah, we are going to do some improvements on the gravel shoulders, and I think, Leroy, we've got sixty-six feet of right-of-way through there. I don't think it's seventy. I know it's not eighty. We might only have sixty-six feet of right-of-way in through there. So I think in the future, if we ever do the full municipal street improvements, you know, a bike path, sidewalks, whatever, I think would certainly be part of that, part of that plan. On an interim basis, we probably have to get off the blacktop somehow and do something within the sixty-six-foot right-of-way that's there.
Yeah, I understand. I guess I just brought it up to you before to, next time, take a twenty-eight feet and add a three-foot strip in there. It's always a cost thing, but we're talking about, that's a great place to have a trail that ties back to McDonald's and Subway, and if kids wanted to go down that other trail and come down there in the summertime and bikes, I think it would be a good thing. But yeah, I understand what you're saying, true.
Anybody else?
Well, I just want to thank Mayo and Mr. Bauer and Mr. Retzickel for their cooperation on getting these assessment agreements in place, so we can move forward and get this all done in the timeframe that the hospital and clinic will be opening.
Short time.
If nobody else has anything, then Chair will take a motion approving the Resolution 2069, adopting the public improvement and special assessment agreements.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Moves us on to item 7C, Resolution 2070, order an improvement preparation of plans. And that goes along with this?
Correct.
And Chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 2070?
I'll second that.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Moves us on to item D, the Truck Highway 52 Safety Assessment Report and Authorization. You're still on the stage.
Wonderful.
We have two guests here to join us tonight. Tom Shore-Whitey is with Short Elliott Hendrickson, works with Greg Anderson in St. Paul. Tom is a transportation engineer, has been working with us as we've looked at the request to consider the retention of the existing access points onto 52 at County 24. Jeff Lomack is here with Mindot. Jeff has also been working with us and Tom, and through the Public Works Commission, to look at the issues that have been brought our way relative to the current construction of the Highway 52 corridor improvements, which again, involve the question as to whether or not the existing points of access, either in their current design or some alternative design, could be retained and continue to provide access off of 52 at that location. Included in your packet was the safety assessment proposal, which was a scope of services and a fee estimate that has been put together jointly by these two individuals. Mindot, through the ombudsman process, came to us, and one of the outcomes of that process was that the city and Mindot would work together to do a transportation engineering study, or in this case, a safety assessment, again, to determine whether or not it's possible to keep some type of access on Highway 52 in or close to the existing point at 24. So the scope of services that have been laid out in the safety assessment have been agreed to by Mindot at this point and by our engineer at SEH. There's almost a $34,000 fee attached to that proposal. Mindot has agreed, if we go ahead, to also participate for fifty percent of that cost. So let's say roughly $17,000 apiece should we go ahead. In addition to the safety assessment, working again through the Public Works Commission, as we've talked about this, we've asked a couple of additional questions to Mindot that are related directly, and in some cases indirectly, to the safety assessment. Questions that we've had discussed at Public Works Commission, questions that have been brought to us by property owners in that area. I handed out, I received it today from I handed out, I received it today from, from Jeff. I handed that out to each one of the council members tonight and earlier today at, at Public Works Commission. But there were some specific questions there that we felt we needed to ask to really help make a judgment as to whether we should or shouldn't proceed with the safety assessment. And those questions really relate to issues beyond the safety assessment. That is, issues that maybe will be addressed with the safety assessment but aren't addressed right at this, at this time. And I'll just go through one by one with, with Jeff's answers and just summarize, and he can certainly fill in any, any additional comments that he wishes. The first one, and this is, this is a concern that came to us from the public. The public seems to be in favor of having the assessment done. The question is, how long's it gonna take to get it done? It's taken a while to get to this point. This isn't the traditional study, but to get to the point where we have a scope of services and a fee has taken a little bit of time. That's before us tonight. But if we're gonna go forward with it, the question's been, well, when's it gonna be done? It's gonna be done next week, next year, ten years? When's it gonna be done? And so we've got a, a duration and a schedule from, from Tom. We had Jeff look at it at Mindot. And when I look at it right now, if we add everything up and we say we get it done on the timeframes that we're talking about, if the study was approved tonight, we're probably looking at September, October roughly, maybe sooner, maybe a little bit later, but probably that timeframe to get through the, the individual tasks of the proposed scope of services. So we've, we've got some time ahead of us in terms of just going through the whole transportation study itself. Item number two was a reiteration, I think, of, of what the existing contract that Mindot has with, with Henches, who's building the interchange, to close the access and remove the signals at existing County twenty-four. The question has been that we understand that that's in the contract. What we really needed to know is there any deviation from that contract? If this study's gonna take till September, October, we don't know what the results are gonna be, but is it possible that the, that the access will remain open to that date or beyond? Jeff's response here is, is that probably they will stay open until about the time we finish this study, maybe a little bit longer, maybe a little bit less. But I don't think it's the intent and it's certainly not the contract of Mindot to keep that access open beyond the, the contract that's been let with, with Henches, the contractor. So at this point, with, with this response from Mindot, the, the access is scheduled to be closed. Item number three, and this, we had some extended conversation with the Public Works Commission on this. Mindot told us through the ombudsman process that if we go ahead and do the, the safety assessment and if we find an alternative design that, that doesn't negatively impact the safe flow of traffic on fifty-two, that Mindot would consider the possibility of, of permitting that. But it would be a project outside of the current contract for the interchange. It would be a brand-new contract and it would be a contract with the city of Cannon Falls. So if there is a proposed solution that comes out of the safety assessment that could lead to the creation of a, assumedly new access at twenty-four, we would be responsible for the cost of the engineering. If we needed to acquire right-of-way, we would be responsible for that. The cost of constructing the new access, we would be responsible as a city for that. So we've asked Mindot in question number three to, to be specific and clear about that, and I think it is very specific and clear, and that is that if some type of improvement is gonna happen on the heels of this safety assessment and process, that if it's gonna be built, it's gonna be built by the city of Cannon Falls. We don't know what it is. We don't know what the cost might be, but what we do know is that Mindot is, is telling us that it's gonna be our responsibility. Question number four. We're very interested in Public Works Commission and obviously the public's very interested in this, is okay, if we go ahead and we do the safety assessment and we find an alternative that might be permitted and we find an alternative that we decide that as a city, we want to engineer and if we have to acquire some right-of-way, purchase it and we wanna have this alternative built, when might that happen? I mean, what's the soonest that might happen? Jeff's response is two thousand fifteen seems very aggressive to him, which says again that if we're gonna go ahead and do this, in all likelihood, based, I'm sure, on lots of experience, it's gonna take some time to build the solution if in fact, we discover a solution that can be permitted. So it's not gonna happen quickly. So we've got some time to do the safety assessment. Depending what comes out of the safety assessment, we're gonna have some time to then go into the next step of, of processes, to get a project engineered, right-of-way purchased if it needs to be purchased, bid, financed, constructed and opened. It's gonna take some time. Question number five was something that was, was, was told to us before about the bridge and overpass at that location, that if the need generates a demand for the overpass, that's when Mindot will come back and have conversations with us about that overpass. The one question that, that isn't answered here and it's my fault, I maybe didn't ask the question clearly enough to Jeff, was if we find an alternative design that is built retaining or creating new access at twenty-four, if that does happen, does that mean that there wouldn't be an overpass? That was really the question and we can deal with that at, at a later, yeah.
I could, I, I do that real-
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Councilman and Mayor. I, I did reread that question after I submitted these and I thought, you know, they're asking this slightly different than when I answered it. And that, if that access is built and open there, whether the bridge would go in or not really depends on what that access is and if there's any development that surrounds that access that may preclude building the bridge. So there's, there's a whole lot of unanswered questions as well for that piece of it, so.
But our concern on that is, and these are a lot of ifs, if we got to the point where we've found a way to do some write-ons or write-offs and write-ons and we spend a lot of money, you know, we spend a half a million, a million dollars to meet whatever specs Mindot comes up with, are we still gonna be subject to that overpass being built? If so, it's, it would be nice to know from Mindot if that's the case because why would the city wanna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to build something and then find out, oh, say in twenty nineteen, that, hey, we're building the, you know, the overpass? You know, that would, that would be foolish on our part to spend that kinda money to do that. So that's, that's why this question came about. And can you tell us definitively whether an overpass would be built if, as, as you guys have said, the traffic levels warranted?
Well, you know, there's a lot of ifs here because it, it's, we don't even know what an access will look like, whether it, it's feasible to do that. Tom and I've had several discussions about this and this safety study is, is a very complicated piece. It's something that I've never seen anything quite like this before, that we would start a study in the middle of a project that we've, we've studied and, and come to a conclusion and have a result on the table and we're half done building it and now we wanna change it and, and study a different alternative in stream, which brings in a lot of, and it's not really a solution. There's, there's multiple options as I see it. Is it a right-in? Is it a right-in, right-out? Is it both sides of the road? Is it one side of the road? Is it temporary in nature? Or is it something that the city would wanna see as-
As Jeff said, there's a lot of what-ifs here and a lot of unknowns. I'm just saying that if we can't, if there's a solution that can be constructed safely within the existing right-of-way that they will permit, then we don't need additional right-of-way. But if there's a solution that requires additional right-of-way that can't fit within the existing confines of fifty-two, the position of Mindot is if we have to acquire land to accommodate whatever the design is and it can't be accommodated within the fifty-two right-of-way, it's our expense. But we don't, but we don't know that yet.
Right.
Yeah.
But no- The one thing I'll say to you, Jeff, is it-
Yes.
The hard thing is for us is, I know you've heard all this 'cause Dave's kept us up to date and, and you're dealing with all this. The hard thing for us in this is that the original part was, the reason we voted for the southern overpass instead of the overpass here is because we were gonna get this bridge with it. And the bridge was gonna be a thing that when you went to the southern overpass, you could come back if you made a mistake, took the wrong turn, you could go over this bridge and still get to our businesses. So then we came along and we didn't get the bridge. So now what really makes it hard is, what they're saying is, if you come along and tell us two years from now, we can put in these right-hand turn lanes or whatever, we're gonna bear the total cost of that, when we actually did pay for that bridge to go in, but we didn't get it. And I know if you come back five years from now and want that bridge, you're gonna tell us you need more money again.
Leroy, they didn't, it was a two million dollar our part. I think it was one point five-
One, one four.
One point four is what we ended up paying.
We haven't paid, we haven't paid for the bridge yet, to my, to our knowledge.
Right.
So my point is, Jeff, is that what's bothering me now is, I, I have told Dave the last three months that if nothing else, get us turn-off lanes. If you can't get the blended lanes, get us turn-off lanes. The problem is that I see is, if we're gonna share the whole burden of this and it costs us a million dollars to try to compensate our businesses out there to get more traffic to them, and you would come along seven years from now and put that bridge in there and say, no, you can't have them in there, we just threw money after, good money after bad here. The other thing is, is that we'd almost, if we can't get these uncertainties and it takes us three, four years to get this done, that's three, four years that these businesses already took to hit that they feel are gonna get by not having it there. So if there ain't some kinda urgency here or something, I, I think the whole thing is almost pointless. I, I don't see the point in even trying to do it. My biggest thing was if we're gonna spend a million or two million to have the lanes in, then at least if we could get the right-hand turn lane for a half million dollars, it might be worth it. But if we're gonna get it in nineteen seventeen, I, I don't know how this fits in. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
David, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't Mindot own a lot of that right-of-way by that northern interchange or that northern intersection now? I mean, they bought the part where Hay was, that one where you got the big dip in there. I think Mindot's already purchased that and some of the other right-of-way right along that area?
They have purchased some additional right-of-way and I don't recall what the full width of fifty-two through that part.
I, I don't recall either.
But they have bought some additional right-of-way.
Whether there would be-
They bought a lot of land right there by that northern interchange. I know that. I mean, and already because there was some talk about cleanup from some of those areas. So, I mean, the right-of-way-
We talked about that, they do own some property there.
So I think they already own quite a bit of property that, I mean, we wouldn't, shouldn't have to purchase the right-of-way from the state. I mean, it's already there.
Yeah, without knowing what the solution is, I can't tell you whether you need right-of-way or not. And, and I do know that one of the things that was talked about when we discussed many of these things is, is if there's a, a significant number of cars that wanna take that right out and, and that'll be part of this, the study to determine how many that is, that there isn't a whole lot of relief once you make the right turn. And if you wanna make a left right-of-way, it could back up out on the fifty-two. And if that occurs, then maybe something needs to be done with the road to ensure that that area flushes out. So the right-of-way may not be along fifty-two. It may be another part of the overall solution that needs to be implemented to make it safe.
Now, now, as I understand, if we were to move forward with this safety assessment, the decision, the timeline on that, that we would know whether there, one, you would permit something and what, what type, we would know by September, October? Is that my, am I correct in understanding that?
I guess I haven't gone through the, the timelines. I think there was, there was times that each section-
I just took, I took Tom's duration and estimates and just added then your review time and that got us into September, October. But like I say, that's simply using the outline of, of Tom's scope of services and the duration for the, for each product. Might go faster, might go slower.
Yeah.
Now, my, my last concern here is obviously nothing would get done in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen unlikely. And this question would be for the business owners and we have a, a couple out in the audience here. Are you gonna survive the two years that it's gonna take?
Actually, and Dave knows this, but we did contact Julie Teats and then her team lead in the ombudsman group and have a question out to ask and find out if there is flexibility to change the contract and the plan somehow to merge the projects, 'cause it was not understood by us until very recently what this meant as a separate project. And these are all fabulous questions. I wish we had answers to them two or three months ago when we were discussing this. Mindot has just strung this out so far in approving the scope of this project and we've also voiced to, you know, the ombudsman and to Dave and all the other, you know, businesses. We do not think we would survive more than a few weeks, actually.
Well, see, and that, that's the question. We up here, we have to answer that, are we gonna put sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars into a study? And do we know if, you know, like with you guys with the SA and, and some of the other businesses, are they gonna be able to survive what looks like a two-year period minimum? And if you're telling me in your case, no, I don't know what the others would have to say, but that's, that's the dilemma for us. Do we, do we go forward and spend that money and- And if the stu- the study could come back, and Mendat could say, no, you know, for safety reasons, we can't do this. Or they could come back and say, yeah, but you gotta do it this way. And then the city would have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars minimum, uh, to do that. So, that's kinda why, you know, I, I need to know what, will the businesses survive? And, and I know you can only speak for your own, uh, company, but, uh, you know, there, there are a few others that may have some issues with that, too. And that's, that's the sixty-four thousand dollar question here tonight.
You know, the other issue I got for the engineer there, too, is, when I've been listening to all these meetings and studies on all this stuff, they always bring up safety. And there's nobody up here that wants more safety than I do. But I told Dave one time, when you got two cars going seventy-five miles an hour side by side down a four-lane, I don't know where the safety factor comes in. But I do know that, if you have these right-out turn lanes, um, and you're gonna take, the people coming from the south, and they're gonna take the overpass, and then come down through all the inside traffic to get the country kitchen and stuff, there's gotta be a safety factor that's better, that they could turn right off in the right-hand turn lane, and not go up the cloverleaf, and put more load on that. So, it, to me, it's not only, uh, the safety factor, I think it is safer to put that right-hand turn lanes in there, because you take the load off the cloverleaf up there. So somewhere in there, there's that factor, too, that I never hear anything. I always hear safety. But if you take load out of intersection and divide it out, I, I'm sure we all know it gets better, the safety, uh, improves. So, I think these, these right-hand turn lanes, anyway, should, should be an asset for the state on that overpass situation out there. Um, and I don't feel that probably the bridge is ever gonna happen. Um, so we, we do need some kind of assurance on this bridge thing. If that's definitely gonna ne- never happen, uh, we need to do the right-hand turn lanes. If the bridge is gonna happen in five years, we can't go buy up more right of way, or whatever, just to do something for two years, if it's gonna take us three years to get to that point. So, there's a lot of money involved. And this is a small town, and we need your help, and we need your input, and our tax base is important to us, needs our tax base out there. Um, I don't think it's, uh, just another big issue for you, for our town, it's important for us. Thank you.
Do you, now, I know the, the fifty-two project, the long-term goal, of course, is to, to make it a freeway with the removal of all the at-grade crossings. Now, this is a real what-if question. When is your best guess that you guys would finally declare it a freeway and, and remove all those things?
That, that's a huge question. And, and as you know, we're all struggling, the city, the state, with, with resources and funding. And, and, um, our, our commissioner has been tasked by the governor to go out and, and send the, you know, spread the word and send the message, and why we need more revenue for, for highways and streets and bridges and infrastructure. And, as you know, that's not being addressed this session. Will it in the future? I don't know. But, bottom line is, as long as we're forced to deal with what we have, expansion projects such as this are gonna be fewer and further, fewer and farther between, because we barely have enough resources to take care of the existing pavements we have today.
What, what I was trying to get at, though, is, if we knew that, oh, ta- twenty years from now, it'll, it'll finally be a true freeway, that could impact our decisions on whether, you know, do we have the, uh, right turnoffs, and, and, or right turn-ons, et cetera, you know, versus, is it gonna happen in ten years, twenty years? Are we all gonna be, uh, on the other side of the grass when it finally happens? You know?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a funding issue, I mean, on the, on the interstate portion of it, I know that, and I know the federal government. Uh, as of right now, uh, they even haven't passed a transportation bill in Washington, and what they've got proposed right now is, uh, passing it, but at the same funding levels of, as of the last few years. And, 'cause they're, they're struggling with revenue also for this. I mean, with, uh, you know, us getting cars that are more economical, while they don't use as much gas, so there's less gas tax, so they, and they, nobody can come up with a way on how to fund it. So, I mean, that's, that's the big issue that we're dealing with, even in Washington DC, just as we are right here in the state of Minnesota.
Right. And, and as you guys are full aware, you know, through our normal program, we'd have never built this project. It was the special funding that we applied together for, to get what we have. And that special funding was limited, is the reason the bridge isn't there. So, we're all kinda stuck with this dilemma because of, of the funding situation.
Well, you put the round body, and we could've spent that money on that bridge. Hey, I just wanna say that I think things have improved with the state, uh, compared to what we used to get two, three years ago, and basically run into that post right there. I, I think improvements have, have been made. And you got a tough job, but we need to let you know where we're at. But, uh, thanks for your time, we appreciate it, uh, but you got a tough job, I understand that.
Thank you, and I appreciate your position, too. I know it's a tough, tough decision for, for you guys to make as well, so, um, any other questions? I'm available.
Any other questions?
Not for Jeff.
Well, this time, uh, we've gotta look at it and, uh, make a determination if, uh, if this is gonna go forward at all. I mean, we still ha- we have to do the safety study, or it's just gonna die at this point, and, and that's, and it would be a mute point. Um, so, I mean, if we're able to even have the opportunity to have the write-offs, or the write-offs and some left-ons, um, I think the study has to, would have to move forward. I mean, it's, it's, sometimes it's the cost of doing business, unfortunately, to, to get something done. And, uh, quite frankly, I'm glad that Mendat's come this far to the table. I mean, uh, look how many years it took to get, you know, the scope of, of the other project done, over, you know, twenty years, so, I, I think it's, uh, it's good that they're willing to work with us to, to at least get the study done. I mean, uh, 'cause, uh, three months ago, I don't even think we were at that point, or anywhere close to it, when we first started talking about these.
You know, Roddy, the one thing I'd like to see is, if we're gonna move ahead with the study, is, I don't, I don't wanna do a study with, uh, the off-lanes and the blend-in lanes. I, I wanna do them as separate studies. So, if it comes down to money, and it comes down to something, at least, we know what the least amount is, not the whole overall package. And is that a big deal to do that? What I'm saying is, I'd like a price, is if we just got the right-hand off-turn lanes, and that was accepted, versus, uh, the, the blend-in lane to go back on again. It, can we get this priced out separately, so we have options?
If I can speak to that. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Tom Surr Whitey with SEH. Um, yes, our intent is to try to, uh, pigeonhole or categorize the data we look at for safety, to be able to address that, to see if, uh, looking in comparable situations, if the right, uh, what we'd call the right out from the city road to the freeway is the problem, and the right in from the freeway off to the city road is not a problem, to, so, we will separate those things, to try to get at that type of thing.
Oh, thank you.
A little bit answered to, um, your, your earlier question, too. Our plan is also to look at the freeway, uh, or the fifty-two ramp terminals, and, uh, as Jeff said, we will be looking at rerouting traffic to, uh, come up with our best estimate as to how much would use a, the, a right-in, right-out. And part of that analysis will also be a safety analysis, looking at the traffic that is removed from those ramp intersections and relocated. Um, and we, we do that by rate. A, a rate is the number of crashes you expect for, per, and the rate is generally based on million entering vehicles. So you, you would have a lower rate if you remove vehicles from the one intersection, and then a different rate at the new intersection, based on the type of intersection. So we do, and intend to try to get at that type of thing also.
Thank you.
And it kinda talks about that in the concept development here, where you lay out different concepts based on what you find in the study.
Any other discussion up here on this?
I'll make a motion, Roddy, to move ahead with it.
Have a motion by Leroy? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Rod, to move ahead with the safety assessment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right, that moves us on to item seven E, which is pool repairs.
I'll backtrack.
Yeah, I asked for this can of worms.
Yeah, it's a big can of worms. I'll backtrack a little bit, just so you kinda see where we're coming from here. Repair the pool parking lot, we kicked that down the road for about six years now. Last year, prior to any of this Minnesota Health Department report, we decided to budget that fifty thousand into the yearly budget. Towards the end of August, when the pool already closed, we got the findings from the Minnesota Department of Health, that all these items were not on the, no longer the, will you do them, it's you will do them, you must do them. So, I wanted to put that out there, just for the fact that, I, I didn't want it to be perceived that somehow, because the referendum failed, we were trying to, this was retaliation, 'cause it wasn't, no way. But that being said, fifty thousand was earmarked last fall from, uh, some of those excesses, if you recall, that Aaron went through. So, in talking to the, uh, Public Works Commission, we've kinda decided that, uh, we could do a bare-bones minimum repair of the mechanical system to get us through this year. And I have a high-end amount of forty-six thousand dollars, and I, I would like to cut away as much of that as I could to, to scale that back. And I think at that time, the committee decided that by doing this, we'll keep the pool going another year, and decide where the future goes from here. This would be a one-year plan, just to get us through two thousand and fourteen. But it's, uh, it's important that we get these wheels in motion, like, really quick, like tomorrow, because we're already pushing up against the timeline, opening date. So, whatever is decided tonight, I just want you to keep that in mind. The money has been earmarked for that, and we can just shift that from the parking lot repairs to the mechanic, mechanical repairs. And that's where the forty-six thousand, plus or minus, will be coming from.
And, and that would include just some patchwork on the existing parking lot?
Yeah, that would be twelve more Band-Aids on top of the six you have, so, yeah.
Well, the biggest problem we got is that fluorinator, and we have to do that. We, um, I mean, you could patch the pool, you could do different things to get by, but the fluorinator is the big schedule thing for us.
Well, yeah, and, and as we just, and Tom touched on it, as we, as we discussed in Public Works today, earmarking that fifty thousand that we're gonna use to completely redo the parking lot should meet all the mechanical needs to open it for this year, with the goal of later this summer, or by late this summer, decide if we should, uh, uh, move forward on whether doing a new pool, or, um, just keep repairing, if we can. We don't know, uh, how long it'll last, but it, if we had to make a decision tonight, we were gonna be so pressed for time, regardless of whether we closed it, looked for a new pool, or closed it indefinitely. So, uh, the plan was to spend this, uh, up to fifty thousand dollars to get all the mechanical, uh, patch, and other patchwork done, to open it for this season. Uh, the season might start a hair late, but not much. Uh, but that way, we're not rushed to make a decision on whether to build new or keep repairing. It'll give us, at least till later this summer, and I think, uh, the Pool Committee and, uh, and Public Works will be looking more into that as we go forward. If, if that's okay with the, you know, the council.
The other thing, uh, I wanted to fill the council in, on what we discussed today, because it was a great meeting. Um, a lot of things got discussed about all this. The one thing that, that I asked Public Works to consider today, and I'd like the rest of the council to consider it, is that I've had several meetings over this with Tom, and Ron, and Smet people, and all this stuff. And the integrity of the pool, uh, the concrete people said, is not in question. Uh, they looked at the bad spots in there, they said that, uh, it'd probably last another ten years. And I said, well, you guarantee that? And they said, no. But they would guarantee it'd probably be okay for five years. So, I looked at that and thought about that. Um, so what I had come up with for the Public Works to consider was, to consider a five-year plan. Uh, and the reason was, is that, um, I also wanted to do the handicap thing. We did find that we have two public restrooms over there that haven't been used for years. If we cut a doorway into each one, we would not only have a handicap restroom, or restroom, we would also have a private restroom. So if people had kids, we could have a changing table in there. If somebody had a medical issue and had to give themselves an insulin shot, they'd have their privacy. Uh, them restrooms are sitting there and haven't been used for years. It'd be a matter of cutting two doors in, we could have that open. I also talked to Smet contractors about what we could do to put three parking stalls up on the flat side of the pool up there, uh, that would be handicap accessible. We got a quote from them to saw the openings bigger, because there's only thirty-two inch openings. Um, we did put together a whole plan, um, to fix the pool completely and make it handicap accessible. Uh, somebody asked me, after forty-six years, why are we doing it now? Well, because I care, and I think we should do it. I, I think the handicap have been neglected for long enough. I also would've liked to seen the chair lift gone in there, because I could see, uh, senior citizens aquatic night, uh, where people could use that chair to get into that pool, if they wanted to do some kind of therapies, senior citizen night over there. I, I personally, uh, would like to see, I want to see a five-year, but I would like to see a three-to-five-year plan to keep the pool open. The reason, uh, I wanna do that is, I feel the integrity is there to do that with the existing pool, but I also want it handicap accessible. I also wanted to do a corner of the pool area with an indoor-outdoor carpet, and a Wi-Fi access out there. I wanted to do better tables and umbrellas, and make it, uh, more appealing to families that gotta sit there while they're waiting for the kids to get their lessons. The whole overall project to do all that, would've been about a hundred thousand dollars. We would've had to push to get that all done this year, and we probably wouldn't have got the pool painting done. But we could get the bulk of it done. And Tom mentioned the fifty thousand that we got in the parking lot. We also have ten thousand that we allot every year for repairs on that pool. We haven't done anything to that pool for years, uh, so we should've had forty, fifty thousand sitting there, but we do take the money when it isn't used and put it back in the general fund. So, if we wanted to, we would have that option, uh, that we could do that pool. That would give us time to study more on the new pool, it'd give us time to have more options for the voters to vote on. I don't necessarily think that this is the right place and the wrong place for the pool, but we haven't considered other locations for the pool. It's always about going back where we're at. So, I guess my option would be, I would like to see us do a three-to-five-year plan, uh, to spend the seventy-five to a hundred thousand, and really do it upright, and then deal with it, and do more study, and another vote, on a voting year, not in an off-year election, to see, to give people other options, and to see what their thoughts are. The one problem I've had with this referendum voting is... The one problem I've had with this referendum voting is that we get some people that don't know if that's just a no vote for no pool at all, or is that a no vote for 4.23 million? What did that vote mean? And we probably slipped up a little bit by not having more options and trying to get more information to know what that means. But, I don't like the idea of closing the pool down and not have any swimming altogether. We can do the Band-Aid and keep it going one more year, but we aren't going to have handicap accessibility again. We aren't going to have the chair lift. And I think we've put off handicap people long enough. And if we do build that new pool, it's somewhere between 150 and $200,000 a year payment on that thing. If we took 100,000 and did it at this pool for three, four years, or five years, it basically is costing us nothing, and we're still providing the service to our community. So, that was all brought up today. That's just my take on the whole thing. Thank you.
Well, I would say, Leroy, during that discussion, we discussed numbers if we were looking at trying to keep it repaired for five years. And, you know, the numbers aren't never exact, but we figured over that five years, about $400,000 minimum to run, to do the repairs, operating losses, et cetera, which is like two to three years' worth of payments on a new pool. That's why we came forward with doing a one-year Band-Aid, as it were, to give us time to study more, whether we go forward with all repairs, or do we go new, whatever. But, we need to buy ourselves time, because we have to decide tonight if we're going to open it this summer, where we're going to go. So, this was kind of a compromise to move forward with using the money that we already have in the budget, that was going to be used toward the pool parking lot, and using that to do the mechanical fixes and a couple odds and ends to get her open, hopefully by the, I think, the second week in June is what we're looking at, I believe.
The big thing, I think, is as we've moved forward with this tonight, I mean, yes, we have to make the decision tonight. I mean, I do like that we do have the funds there that we could open the pool this year. And then, you know, we do have, we have had some feedback on the structure of the pool now. Before, it was just based off of what we didn't really know. And that's one of the reasons I asked to get some numbers, come back to us, so we got something concrete to deal with. I mean, and I know in our long-range budget plan, the new pool was out till like 2019 anyway. So, I mean, 19 or 20, because we looked tonight before the meeting. And so, we do have that time to start making that decision. But, I mean, if we can at least open it this year with what we've got and move forward, then we can deal with starting the long-range plans for the future, to do it the right way, to where we can put a pool together. I mean, 450 million, I mean, that's way beyond our scope in this town for a swimming pool for three months out of the year. I mean, but, I mean, I know we can probably get one done for less than that and make it appease to everyone going forward. So, I mean, this time, I think I'd take a motion to either open or close the swimming pool.
I got one question. Equipment that you'd put in, and let's say we get a newer pool or whatever, can you use some of that?
We could try. We could try and spec that in. Yeah, we certainly could. And I would hope in the future, we get more input from the public, because the Pool Committee worked very hard to answer a lot of these questions that were asked after the fact. They worked through other sites, and they worked through indoor/outdoor pool, and they worked through all the bells and whistles. Where's the tipping point? Where are you building the same old pool of what we have now? So, they worked through all that. But, just the angry manner that some of the people came forward and asked the same questions after the fact, I wish some of those people would have came forward sooner in the process to got their input into the equation earlier.
Well, I would, I guess I would make a motion that we use the $50,000 that we have earmarked for the pool parking lot to make the necessary mechanical and other odds and ends to open the pool this year.
I'll second.
What about, Robbie? I don't want to bring all this up, Ron, but was there a conflict of interest thing, or is there a possibility, what we talked about today, that that can work? What's the situation on that?
Well, between that meeting and tonight, I didn't get a chance to look at that with the league, but my opinion is that, and the discussion was that Leroy said he was willing to kind of be a volunteer overseer of the project, we'll call it that, without being involved with his business, just to volunteer. And whether or not that would be a conflict for him to vote on this tonight as approving the, moving forward.
Well, that would have been the context of if we had gone with trying to space it out over five years, and we'd slowly fit those things in. What we're, well, we've got a motion and a second on the floor tonight is just the mechanical fixes, which, you know, we don't, staff is going to handle that.
Well, my thing is, if you're going to do the basics here, it's no problem for Tom to handle this. If you're going to do any of the little extras, his plate is full. He's got the freezer problems, he's got street problems, he's got sweeping problems, he's got everything going on right now. That's why I volunteered to work with him and actually for him and help with this project. I would like to see if there's any little extra money that we put that indoor/outdoor and the carpet in that corner and just do some things to improve that, get the Wi-Fi access. This is all stuff that if it's okay for me to volunteer my time, I'd be willing to take care of that kind of stuff and get that done while he's doing the pool chlorinator and all that stuff.
I mean, that's something, first off, we have, okay, first off, guys, stop right there. All right. First off, we have to vote on the motion, and the second that we have on the table to either open, to spend the money to open the pool this year. That's what the motion is. So, are we going to have any further discussion? If not, Chair will take, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right, so the pool will open. Okay, at this point, Leroy, now we can look at, I don't think there'll be a conflict of interest if you're not getting paid. Because at that point, you would be receiving something monetarily, which I don't think would be the conflict that we would have to worry about in this aspect. But, yes, we can, I mean, the city can look at maybe getting some type of Wi-Fi there, you know, to be in the pool area. And, you know, we could probably look at some kind of indoor/outdoor carpet to put in a certain area, but, and we could probably find a fund somewhere to do that. But, you know, let's get the pool open and then look at that and see what kind of cost it would be to do that.
The one thing, reason I brought that up today is just for the council to know is that I, this is stuff I specialize in. This is stuff I do for a living. I do, I am trying to cut back on my workload. I can volunteer for stuff like this now. The biggest problem I've had with construction in the last three years is we built the fire hall that we couldn't keep the floor level in it, it's five inches off. We built the library that we got water coming through the walls. I got a call from people up on the west side that the concrete is popping off from our street project. And I'm really tired of problems, and I would like somebody to watch over this. And I told Greg today, our engineer, that if I don't do this, and I want him to do it, and I'm probably going to be bugging him every other day. So, it'd probably be just easier if I did it. So, that is my concern. There's no motive here, Doc, that I just don't like the way our construction projects been going lately.
And Leroy, you're volunteering, and I certainly appreciate that. But, we voted to open and do the minimal repairs, and I think that's what, as we move forward, Public Works and the Pool Committee, we can together try and decide, okay, maybe we want to do some more of that stuff with the handicap, maybe to repair and go more years. But, we also might decide, yeah, maybe we can build a scaled-down version of what was proposed in the referendum, where you can get it down to maybe two and a half million instead of the 4.2.
Right.
And that might be more palatable for the public.
I think that all needs to be discussed, and I think it needs to be discussed a lot more than we have.
Right. But, that's why, that's why this compromise, I think, was a good one. We can get it open this year and give us time, instead of having tonight go, well, let's close it and build new. You know.
And I'll leave it up to you guys, and I'll leave it up to Tom. Tom calls up, says, I'm getting all these calls, I need a little help. I'll come help. If I don't hear anything, I'm fine. It's okay. Thank you.
All right. This time, we'll move on to the reports. Mr. Maroney.
I have 14 items.
Okay. Okay, what's the first one?
I have one item, just to report that if you're not aware, the event center is under construction. The Maloney's are intending to have their first event, and the new event center's on June 1st. We're going to continue to work with them along the way to see that anything that they need from the city, we can, we can help foster and get that open. But, if you haven't been up there, it's looking really nice.
Looking real nice. I took a tour last week, and really nice up there. Brenda?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
I just wanted to let you guys know that we're advising people to maybe let their water run another week or two. When we're setting the curb rods down, we're finding that there's still frost on their shut-offs. So, just to play it safe, I'd like to see those that had problems to keep going for another week or two before they turn their water back. And at that point, we'll be ready to review the bills and where we stand on that.
We should be able to do that at our next Public Works meeting in May. We should have the numbers by then, right?
That's the intention, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you. Oh, just so the public doesn't wonder, our female swan died this spring. The swans mate for life. Their life expectancy is, was about where it should have been. So, we have to figure out what we want to do, if we want to bring a new pair in. We can't bring, make a threesome out of the deal, because somebody will be killed during the breeding season. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. We have the one male there, and that's, that's the way it's going to be for now, I guess.
Thanks. Chief?
Well, while the weather is warming up, we are seeing a lot more walkers and people out and about. I just want to remind the motoring public to be, you know, start being cautious, watching for the kids on the bikes, people that are sharing the roadways. We have a lot of sections of town where we do have sidewalks, so people are using the roadway with the motor vehicles. Just be careful. For the walkers, same thing. Walk so that, you know, you're aware of what's around you. Strongly encourage people not to plug in their headsets and crank the music up, because they can't hear cars approaching. They've got to have something while they're running, you know, one ear works, so they can still hear. Second thing is Police Commission will be following the first meeting in May. And that's all I have.
Ron?
A couple of things. The library, I sent an email to you today. Bossert had another report, not necessarily another good report. They did have some water. They did the testing yesterday at 1:00 or thereabouts, and they did have additional water, so there's more. You can look at the report from Bossert, but there's more work to be done, more corrections. And the other thing is, perhaps you're aware AT&amp;T was looking at, is looking at putting a tower up on, or an antenna up on our tower. And I'll be working with them on, and I'm working with SEH, engineer with SEH that specializes in that sort of thing. So, we'll be coming to you with something in the future, but I'm immersing myself in newfound information with towers and antennas.
Is that, is that the one, Ron, that we found out two years, two years ago we owned, or is that the water tower you're talking about?
Water tower.
Okay. Because we did, we do have another tower out there. Thank you.
Merle?
Watch out for motorcycles, too.
Nothing. I would just, the last few Public Works meetings, I want to thank those that work on the committee, Merle and Jeremy, and a number of staff members, because our Public Works meetings have been going far longer than our council meetings ever do. So, we put, they put in a lot of time to bring forward recommendations to the council to consider. So, I just wanted to thank them for putting in fairly lengthy meetings.
Leroy?
The, just a couple of quick things. I went to the Mayo meeting last week. I thought it was really a good meeting. I guess the Mayo is getting so big, it kind of scares me a little bit that they're getting so big. I don't know how they can even control it anymore. But, good people, good staff there, good meeting. If they do half of what they're trying to do, I think the town is lucky to have them working with us. So, it was a good meeting to attend. I'd recommend it to council members to attend that. The other thing was, we had a busted meeting last Saturday at like 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. Our young staff here at Public Works had to get up early and take care of this, and they did a great job, stopped up there and talked to them a couple times, just to see how everything was going. And I was just proud of the young staff that took care of this. It's nice to see the young people taking the responsibility and taking over these projects like that. So, good job by our Public Works staff. Thank you.
Nothing.
Just like to say to everybody, good job. Tom, thanks for all the hard work you did. I know you've been working hard on the pool project. I guess now they can look at hiring some lifeguards for the summer, and we can move forward. So, and Ron's got one more thing.
I forgot, one of the more important things that happened this week is, I guess it was last Friday, I was asked for and requested a tour of the treatment plant inside and out, and I got it. Joey gave me a nice couple-hour tour, no charge, and I was really impressed with the facilities, how clean, the cleanliness, the knowledge of the operator. I was really impressed, and it's a good thing. And then Dave Pagel showed me around of the different stormwater ponds, parks, and we have a lot to take care of. You guys do a good job.
And again, thanks to everybody that is showing concerns, you know, for all the issues that we do have in the city. I mean, the council's only as good as what the input we get from the citizens, so the more that you get involved, the better decisions that can be made. It doesn't always go everybody's way, but we try to make the best decision with what we have to work with. So, thanks to everybody else out there, too. And at this time, I will, if nobody has anything else, take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.